All right, welcome to this afternoon's regular business meeting as well as our millet rate hearing. Our first order of business will be the invocation and we will have a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. So if you would, please stand with me.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, good evening. Welcome to our July 16th, 2024 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments during this time?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I would like to take item seventeen off of the consent agenda, place it on the regular agenda. Resolution 2024-178 authorizing Clayton County terminate professional services agreement with Ohio River South. Are there any others?
Yes, I would like to take number sixteen, ordinance 2024-177, and put it on the regular agenda.
I also need to add, for the purpose of the agenda, the millet presentation and hearing, and that is to be placed on the agenda. Place that in form of a motion. Is there a second? Second? Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Are there any others? Madam Clerk, you have, I believe, a correction you need to state. If you would, please do so.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number twenty-four on page eight, the language needs to be corrected. Dr. Dupree did not resign. She sent an email not seeking consideration for reappointment on July 2nd, which is two days after her term ended. So I just wanted to state that on record, that she did not resign. Thank you.
All right, if that is it for the agenda, corrections, deletions, additions, then I will call for an adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous.
Our next item is a proclamation. Young gymnast Nova Morrison shines at NGA Nationals. This is presented by Chairman Jeffrey E. Turner.
Is he in his... Oh, please, come forward. Come forward.
Whereas Nova, AKA Supernova, is a five-year-old male gymnast from Clayton County, Georgia, who made waves at the National Gymnastics Association Nationals in Anaheim, California. He competed against other gymnasts from 27 states and three countries. He emerged as the all-around champion for Level One in ages five through eights. And whereas, he received gold medals on the pommel horse and floor exercises, along with a silver medal on the high bar and a bronze medal on the rings and vaults at the Nationals in Anaheim, California. And whereas, Nova was born in College Park, Georgia, where he still lives with his family. He started attending gymnastics classes at eight months old in Smyrna, Georgia, until he was two years old. He then progressed to Clayton County's own kids gym until he was four years old. And whereas, Nova is currently training at the James Jones Gymnastics Academy in Jonesboro, Georgia, under Coach James Jones, who has continued to nurture Nova's talent and guided him to this national victory. And whereas, Nova has etched his name in gymnastics history, and this rising star is one to keep an eye on in the world of gymnastics. Now, therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby honor Nova Morrison for his dedication, hard work, and strive for excellence in gymnastics. Your talent is undeniable. Keep this in mind as you progress on your journey. The fusion of your skills, enthusiasm, and passion will guide you to triumph in everything you pursue. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 16th day of July in the year 2024.
And he is from Clayton County, and he is a marvel, I'm telling you. He represents Clayton County represented not only in the national level but on the world level. Let's give him his family. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, our next presentation would be the millet rate presentation hearing. This will be presented by our Deputy CFO, Angela Jackson.
Ms. Jackson.
Good evening, Chairman and Vice Chair and Commissioners. We're going to start reviewing with the review of the millet calendar. On July 3rd, 2024, an ad appeared in the Clayton News Daily for the five-year history, the three millet hearings, and the adoption of the millet. On July 16th, which is today, we had a hearing at 11:00 a.m. this morning, and now the current one at 6:00 p.m. On July 24th, an ad will appear in the Clayton News Daily for the third hearing as well as the adoption. On August 6th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., we will have the third hearing and the adoption of the millet rate for Clayton County. We're going to start with the budget. The budget sort of drives the millet rate. We had the perfect storm during this year's budget. Expenses increased and revenues decreased. Medical service fees increased 4.9 million. Contractual costs increased 2.7 million. The county liability insurance increased 1.4 million. Medical claims increased 1.3 million. R and M buildings increased 3.3 million. Minor computer equipment increased 500,000. Electric, water, gas, and oil increased 1.4 million. In addition to that, we had new mandates from the state legislature. We had an ethics board that we needed to fund this year. We also had increased salaries for some of the elected officials. To go with the increase in expenses, we had a decrease in revenue. The public utility tax decreased from 15.1 million to 7 billion for an 8 million decrease in revenue. The requested expenses by departments for this year's budget totaled 383.7 million. The forecasted revenue was 284 million for a $99 million difference. The budget cuts across departments totaled 66.8 million. The board decided not to reduce any services to the citizens of Clayton County. As a matter of fact, they enhanced some of the services. In order to do that, we had to increase the millet. The tax digest is an official listing of all property and assessed value of the property and the taxes levied on the property. The assessed value is 40% of the fair market value, lest any exemptions the citizen or the homeowner may qualify. In the paper this year, we had to advertise a 31% increase on millet. That's the increase over the rollback rate. That is not the increase over last year's millet rate. The rollback rate is the rate that would produce the same revenue on the current digest had there not been any reassessments. So you have to provide that increase over the rollback rate. The millet last year, the gross millet was 16 mils, the net was 12.360. The proposed millet this year is 18.5 mils, and the net millet would be 15.266 for the county. Examples, an average value of a home in Clayton County of 250,000, the increase would be On a $100,000 home, the increase would be $87.18. The average value of a business in Clayton County is 350,000, which would be an increase of $406.84. On the business of 250,000, the increase would be $290.60. Does the board have any questions at this time?
No, ma'am. Thank you for your presentation.
I have a question, Chairman.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Commissioner Reeves.
Can you talk about the changes over the past five years for the millet rate? I believe you mentioned that it was posted in the daily organ as well?
Yes, it was posted in the Clayton News Daily as well as on the Clayton County's In FY19, the gross millet rate was 20.557. In FY20, it was 19.1620. In FY21, it was 18.535. In FY22, it was 18.1970. In 2023, 16 mils, and current proposed is 18.5.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that I understand. So the proposed millet rate for 2024, 2025 is actually lower than the millet rate in 2020 or 2019?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, at this time, we are going to enter to our public hearing, and I am going to ask, everyone will get an opportunity to speak. I will ask everyone in the audience to be respectful and mindful of the speaker, why they speak, and refrain from any outbursts or any affirmation or dissension on anything that anybody would be saying. Let's be respectful of the speakers and their time. So at this time, I am going to call Orithea Enzley.
Good evening, Orithea Enzley, Clayton County, Unincorporated Clayton County. This is about the millet, and it's very simple. For seniors, I am suggesting, and I'm sure other people feel the same way, that seniors need to have a break on this because if you don't, it's like everything goes up but our retirement. Our retirement stays the same. It doesn't go up, it doesn't move with it. And we really do need help in that field. So that's a suggestion that we just, with the seniors, at someplace you find, you decide maybe what that age is, but we definitely need to think about it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. I love your shirt. Also, if you would, please put your cell phones on silence, please. Either cut them off or put them on silence. Deborah Buchanan. Deborah Buchanan. And as y'all come up to speak, please state your name clearly for the record in a minute, and then you can proceed to speak.
Hello, my name is Valerie Zanders, and I've resided in Jonesboro for 21 years. This current budget you, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners adopted, sets a millet rate higher than the rollback millet rate. Thus, the county is generating even more money above and beyond what is required, essentially putting an unnecessary burden on us, the taxpayers. Over the last five years, home values in the county have increased 53%, and our property taxes have increased 53% as well, generating an abundance of revenue for the county. My income, on the other hand, has not increased in double digits. In order for me to function, I had to make lifestyle changes. I changed my spending habits. I cut back. I couldn't just go to my boss and demand more funds. So I think you, the Clayton County Commission, needs to consider us, the taxpayers, those of us who elected you and maintain the current millet rate. We, the taxpayers, are struggling. Last year, we received an additional home status exemption from the state of Georgia. It was greatly appreciated, saving me approximately $600 on my 2023 property taxes. So this increase you are requesting now, which is over and above last year's maintaining current levels, will require me to pay almost $1,000 more than last year. If I do have to pay that amount, I will have to cut back on other things. I won't have money to do the necessary exterior home improvements, nor will my neighbors. Some won't even be able to pay bills. Where would these funds come from that you are trying to impose on us? Must we borrow from Peter to pay Paul? Isn't the goal to keep Clayton County beautiful? I implore you to maintain the current millet rate. Home values are increasing, so you are already generating significantly more revenue than you previously had. Tighten your belt, as I have already tightened mine. Thank you respectfully, Valerie Zanders.
Lisa Goodman Bowyer.
Hello, my name is Lisa Goodman Bowler. I reside in Allenwood, Georgia. I am totally against it. The reason is because everywhere you look, every piece of land in Allenwood, there's either storage or trucking company going up. And so therefore, there's revenue. If it's not revenue, then the board should say, "Stop." But that's not what's happening. Every piece of land in Allenwood has storage or a trucking company going up. So just like the lady said, I suggest you all go back and look at your budget, the same way we have to, and you need to decide what's important and what's not. But continuously raising the taxes is not the answer. It's not the answer because we're not getting more people into Clayton County because it's just something here that's driving them there. In fact, people are leaving. And so if we want to keep people in Clayton County, the solution is not raising our taxes. So I suggest you go back and look at the property that we have, the businesses that's coming in, because we're getting the businesses. We're getting them. You go 85, you go Amber Block, you go all over the place. You're getting the revenue. You're getting the business coming in, you're getting the revenue. The solution is not raising the taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anthony Dean. Anthony Dean.
I'm Anthony Dean, homeowner in Morrow, Unincorporated Clayton County. I guess there's a couple of things that just aren't adding up with the millet rate going up. As previous guests said, with all around us, I'm seeing apartment complexes going up, I'm seeing all of these trucking distribution centers going up, and I'm thinking that should be revenue for the county. And then when I look at the money that we're spending and the rates that have gone up for school tax, school tax has gone up way high. I believe in education. I believe in what we're doing and what we're doing with our high schools and renovation. At the same token, we have to look at, the homeowners are paying those school taxes in addition to wanting to increase the millet rate. That's putting a lot of burden on homeowners that are trying to bring value and want value in this county. I think that we should re and look at how we can better manage the county expenses versus trying to raise them on homeowners. I know the revenue's coming in. I don't know if we've correctly gone over, or maybe we need to have a hearing, where the county expenses are exactly coming from. And have they increased? Have they decreased? Because we're right now, we don't understand what the county revenue has been. Has it grown since we've seen all these things going on? I know a lot of construction that's going on, a lot of that stuff is splosh money. So that's not even necessarily our tax, you know, our property taxes, that's penny sales tax. So we're very confused on how is the county losing revenue, and what are we going to do about that lost revenue? Are we, is the businesses that are coming in going to eventually increase the revenue of the county? Is that where we're going? Right now, the way it's looking, if we're losing revenue, we have to ask the question, why are we losing revenue? And that's the big problem. Because if we keep losing revenue, it's looking like we'll keep raising our home, you know, our taxes, our property taxes. So it seems like the root of the problem is if we're not getting enough income for our county, that needs to be addressed. And we need to hear, how are we addressing this revenue problem that we have in the county if it's not bringing in enough revenue to run our county the way it needs to be run? So I guess that's my comment here. We need to deal with the root of the fact of how are we increasing or how are we going to increase the revenue of our county so that the burden doesn't have to be all on the property owners? Thank you.
Ann Daughtry. Ms. Ann? No? Okay. Fred Edenfield.
Fred. I'm Freddie Edenfield from Fairfield subdivision. You know, I can pay $50 for a hamburger. I won't. You can raise the millet rate. You shouldn't. I had a chance to look at the budget, and the question I got, did you ask each department head to justify every dollar that they're asking for and make sure it's valid? I've looked at the expenditures across the board. In every area, they are decreasing except for one. But you're asking for more from the taxpayers. Doesn't make sense. Citizens are struggling. I'm not one of them, but citizens are struggling with the basics. Food, clothing, shelter. They've got a limited resource, and they and I are not your ATM. Thank you.
Millard Hampton.
My name is Millard Hampton. I'm on the Fairfield Community Board of Directors in Clayton County, District Four. The proposed 31% property tax increase millet is short-sighted and unwarranted. Clayton County already has one of the highest property tax rates of all Georgia counties. Our country as a whole is experiencing a reduction in revenue due to increased vacancies of commercial properties. The current trend of reduced commercial property tax revenue may continue to decline for years in the future. Yet, during this time, Clayton County is reducing property taxes for some businesses like Total USA without disclosing to residents the reason or the cost. Where is our representation? A loss of tax revenue under responsible fiscal policies warrant cutting back on personnel. It would also warrant cutting back on spending as a whole. I suggest you limit spending to essentials only until we are out of this economic crisis. My community in District Four Fairfield has asked you to help us with repair of Line Creek. Line Creek has been damaged by construction on higher ground and the expansion of Hartsfield-Jackson's Airport runways. This circumstance has diverted more and more stormwater into creeks throughout Clayton County, which has widened once small creeks and now threatens many homes and buildings at Fairfield's community and throughout Clayton County. As far as for Fairfield's community's dilemma, you told us it was our land, it was our problem. This speaks volumes towards the lack of representation by Clayton County Commissioners. We have also asked you to not abandon a small strip of land which could further impact Line Creek in our community. You refuse to help Fairfield Community and District Four on both concerns. Additionally, why do Clayton County leaders and city management lack the ability to obtain sufficient tax revenue and relief from Hartsfield-Jackson Airport, which has caused the environmental stormwater damage that has impacted Clayton County? Most of all, if not all, of Clayton County's creeks and environment have been damaged by stormwater runoff from Hartsfield-Jackson Airport. It's hard to understand why Clayton County leaders can't present a reasonable case to convince Hartsfield-Jackson Airport and the FAA to work with you to solve our problem by converting stormwater systems from creeks to a stormwater drainage, underground stormwater drainage system before our county is bankrupted. You need to realize, you are one disaster away from bankruptcy, and this county is being separated, from this county being separated and annexed into neighboring counties due to this lack of foresight. Perhaps this is already planned in the future. When times are good, you raise property taxes. Now, when times get tough, you raise property taxes even higher. And all the while, there is no explanation or update on the taxpayer loss of $559,000 from the Roman Development. Clayton County Department Managers and Accountants could all learn a lesson from some of your residents. When times get hard, we cut back and reduce our expenses. When times are good, we prepare for rainy days first before spending. Before you attempt to pass the buck, let us look at your role as county commissioners. County Commissioners are the county's top policymakers, supervising the county's management and administration. Commissioners are elected members of a county legislative branch, the county board of commissioners who serve in a capacity similar to that of a city council member, state representative, or senator. Commissioners oversee the management and administration of the county, representing county interests at the state and federal levels, participating in long-range planning, and managing the county budget and finances. Clayton County needs conservative and fiscal responsible leadership who looks after its residents in Clayton County. We also need Commissioners who have the courage to dismiss or demote department heads who do not know how to manage their budgets or cut back in times of crisis. We need attorneys capable of working with Hartsfield-Jackson officials, county, state, and federal agencies. Until there is a change, I predict Clayton County will continue to increase property taxes year after year after year while giving businesses tax breaks year after year after year on the backs of the citizens of this county. Why don't you take some time to think about what we all have to say today? And please, 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 I hope you understand what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Treon Henderson. Treon Henderson. Pat Pular. Pat Pular.
Good evening Chair and our Commissioners. My name is Pat Pular and I reside in Ellenwood, Georgia. And I am on a fixed income. And it is apparent that we have not yet made any hard decisions because it seems easy to just raise taxes on county homeowners. Have we even tried again to get our fair share from the airport as we did prior to 2012? Was it possible to tell us about the proposed property tax hike prior to our last election? Where is the transparency?
Brenda Gilliam. Brenda Gilliam. Marcia Robertson. Marcia Robertson. Joycelyn McCulery.
Hi, my name is Joycelyn McCully and I live in Riverdale, Georgia. And I'm disgusted. I'm very disgusted because this madness is going on across the country. And it seems like as Americans, we can't support other Americans. And it's, it's a, a very strange picture to me. 31%, not normal. Not normal at all. When the income in this county is not going up with the 31%, it's a tragedy and a travesty. I wish you all would consider people, real people functioning in this county. Thank you.
Erica McCullery.
Hello, my name is Erica McCully. I am a resident and a product of Clayton County Public School Systems. Born and raised here. I vote no if I had to vote. I feel like this millage rate, the math isn't mathin'. You're burning the candle at both ends if you vote yes for this. Because you already don't have a younger generation moving in purchasing homes because the income, they can't get a loan to get a mortgage. No one should need help. Buying a house in America is a fundamental experience. It's not a hard experience. It's only hard when you have to work the job to make the money. And we have hardworking Americans in this country that deserve to be respected, especially on the other end of the candle, for the citizens who have worked hard and have lived here for years. It's not fair to the seniors who are moving towards their golden years and having to pay for health. When you have to pay for health, the first thing they're going to take is your home. This seems like a slow agenda to take homes from the seniors so that you will have control over the land in this county. If you have control over the land in this county, the citizens as well as their descendants will no longer be in this county. The math isn't mathin'. As we roll through that clip-
Let's not have any outbursts, ma'am, please.
As we roll through that clip very fast, there's a few numbers that I found deserving. How did we come to the 40% on the fair market value of the homes? Because there is a formula. I need to know what the numbers are. I also need to know what, far as the expenses, inflation is everywhere. Inflation is everywhere. And I heard there was an increase in the salaries. What was the increase in the salaries? What percentage was that? Because it's evident, everyone understands we all need more money to live. So where is this money coming from? Why does it have to come from the citizens? Money is being had all up top. No money is being had at the bottom. It's not fair. So if I have to vote, I vote no. And I want you all to show me how to vote for the next election when it's time to vote for Commissioners.
Donna Smith. Donna Smith. Euthia Crump. Euthia Crump. Sonya Beadle. Sonya Beadle. Stacy Nelson.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Nelson. I've been a resident of Riverdale, Clayton County for over 20 years. I wholeheartedly agree with what everyone has said thus far. And I think the board needs to take a look at all of the increases that are going across the board as it relates to the contractual costs, the county liability insurance, the medical claim expenses, utilities, and other personal costs. There are over 330 residents that live in Clayton County. You guys have an obligation to take care of the well-being of the residents that are in Clayton County. We're not in the times where people are being covetousness over money and greed. We have a lot of citizens, senior citizens, that live in this county and we need to be able to respect the elders within this county and in addition to the other people that are coming in this county. You have a lot of renters in this county and I'm not sure what that property tax is for people who are living in those apartment homes. But please take into consideration the 330,000 residents that live in this county from the oldest to the youngest and do your responsibility of taking care of the citizens within this county. Thank you.
Joyce Jordan.
Hello, my name is Joyce Jordan and I've lived in Clayton County since 1993. I just basically wanted to say, kind of to piggyback on what she was saying, we're almost at a point to where our renters and our homeowners are almost neck and neck. And the more we say affordable housing, I'd like for you to define that. Is that going to be houses or is that going to be apartments? Because if you are increasing the number of renters and the people that are owners are moving out, that means that we're carrying everything on our backs. So then I also want to ask, what does the county surplus look like? Have you explored state and federal options of getting assistance? Companies, like they were talking about, the airport and MARTA, are they giving back into the community? They seem to be taking out, but are they giving back? Are they bringing jobs in our community? They're taking out, but are they giving back? So I think we need to look at that because as we try and grow, all the other counties seem to be growing. We seem to be just filling apartments. We need to be filling houses. Okay? Thank you.
Sylvia Seiler. Sylvia Seiler. Nicole Worthing. Nicole Worthing. Darlene Major. Luanne Crum. Luanne Crum. Lalithia Washington.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Lolita Washington and I'm a new resident of Clayton County. Was proud to be, built my third home. I was in Henry Ellenwood and now I'm Clayton Ellenwood. So I'm, Clayton County drew me to Clayton County because of taxes and oh, it's cheaper and I can get a better deal. But now I am trying to help my parents and myself. And we're both in Clayton County. So if this does pass or if it does go through, that means I got to try to manage my household and theirs too. So I'm hoping that we can come to some type of solution because I don't think we, the people that are here, are trying to keep up with the Joneses, the Atlantas, the Alpharetas, and the Gwinettes. I think we want to be safe in our own county because now I have a new 30-year mortgage and I want to stay there. I want to be in my home, but I want to make sure that I can afford to pay for it. So I hope when we say, "In liberty and justice for all," that it means in liberty and justice for all. That we're all able to be homeowners and be able to afford to be in our home and provide for our families. So I really hope that this is taken into consideration that we do not increase this where it doesn't become a hindrance on us to become homeowners and then may have to be apartment owners. So please take this into consideration and let's stay in liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Bertha Dillon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. And I thank you for an opportunity to say to you that I disagree with this thir-
State your name.
Bertha Dillon. I'm a 30-year property owner in Riverdale, Georgia. I want to thank you for an opportunity to let you know that I do not and I oppose this 31% tax increase in property taxes. We have heard a lot of things and I agree with a lot of the presentations. But let us not forget that word that we hear and we don't want it to come here, that people are homeless because they cannot pay their property taxes. And it will happen. We know that. You cannot just impose on people that are on limited incomes and other people who may not be on limited incomes but have other responsibilities that would keep them from paying this large increase in property taxes. So I hope that as you look out in this room tonight, we are here with a message that we oppose this. And we hope that you will give more consideration to whatever you have to do to make sure that this does not go in. Thank you.
Miki Garber. Miki Garber.
I'm sitting over here today.
You know I was looking for you, right? Somebody else must have got your spot.
Madam Clerk, Miki Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Let me say this about spending the money and how we need to cut back. There's more people, hopefully, are moving to Clayton County. And I'm not in favor of cutting our fire department, our police department, any security at the jail. Because let me remind you that all of these people are family people and they have to feed their families and house their families and clothe their families. So in that area, I'm not willing to cut. But let me say this, which has already been, been said, but I'll say it again. We need to pay more diligence to how we're spending the money. And I'll bring up that Roman thing again, $559,000. In my calculations, that's, that's over a half a million dollars right there. Another thing, in, in buying automobiles at the jail that require electricity and ain't no place to plug them up. Now with that being said, let me get on. With the new millage rate, and I will take an answer, if it's the correct one, from any one of the Commissioners. What is the projected extra amount of income with this millage rate being, being levied against the people in Clayton County? Let me hear that number. Okay? That leads me to understand that none of you have checked to see how much money you're going to be getting, to see how much more money you'll get to spend. That is, that is insane. I couldn't run a business like that. My mother wouldn't let me. Thank you.
Looks like Jan Dooley. Is that correct? Jan Dooley? Jan Dooley? Okay. Barbara Evans. Barbara Evans. John Evans. Right here.
Hi, we are the Evans. I'm Barbara and it's John. And we have lived in Clayton County since we came here from Germany for 31 years. And I want to say that this was the first time I started feeling threatened and our elderly age. Yeah, he's 02. But, but what I'm saying is, you know, you work your life and you pay off your home and then you sit here and now you are worrying about you're going to lose your home because taxes. We already fought the increase one time for our house with paying our tax and now we got this millage rate thing. Well, it's going to be rough. When, everybody has said the same thing. When you're a senior and you got a whole big huge 4% raise from Social Security, God only asks for 10% of TIES and I pay that. You know, I do my offering, but 31%, that's going to be rough. That's going to be rough. I'm fighting with everything that Clayton County has been doing to me. Someone mentioned about the gas station that's going behind my home. But now you have a developer want to put 45 single units behind my home. So is it just that I just need to fold up my home now and tell my three girls who also own homes in Clayton County, what they're going to be suffering is that we should all just gather up and move out of here and just go buy another home in another county? I love Clayton County. My church is in Clayton County. But like I say, with 4% raise coming to me, you know, Social Security love me. And God asks for 10. You guys want a lot. I love my firemen. I love my policemen. I say that we should always make sure we have money to take care of them. But computers, y'all need to learn to share.
The only thing I want to say is that 47 units on six acres of land, there's no space out there already. I don't understand that. And then there's a service station sitting right there in the middle and they're going to put them all around that particular, they can put people and homes in that same general area. That is something to be taking a look at too as well. But at the same time, there's nothing to change that much in Clayton County and all that type of money y'all are asking for. But I know everybody here has got some kind of tight things going on. But we're seniors and we are the guy, the people that's out here trying to make sure that we're living the right life. Thank you.
Like I say, he's 02.
Clemmie Jones Jr. Clemmie Jones. Jay, Jay Cressis. Jay Cressis. Ashley Braswell. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, jumped the gun. Yes, sir.
You know, my question is that-
State your name for us.
Oh, Jay Cressis. And I've been a property owner in Clayton County since 1982, I guess. You know, my question is, is that the simple little family home that I bought for 50-something thousand dollars is now valued at 250. And that's increased tax income. So it should be, I would think you'd be having a millage rollback with the rise in prop, in property values. And I know y'all have a tough job budgeting. But I also see a wish list in here. The stuff that's unaffordable. You grab a little bit of federal money, you get addicted to it. Then you have to turn around and keep the same program running with your own money. And we just need to concentrate on police, education, fire. That's it. That's it. So, I mean, tighten up.
Dawn Porter.
So, I just wanna say this. Oh, Dawn Porter.
Thank you for doing my job.
I've been in Clayton County for three years. I bought my home here. I moved from the state of Illinois, so the taxes were coming from Illinois, you're like, ooh, yeah, they're great. But as I listen to everyone around me, I have the same sentiments for the seniors and people who have been in the county for, you know, a hundred years paying the taxes. So, I just wanna leave you with this nugget right here. I'm respectfully, respectfully, I'm saying to you that it sounds like everyone is saying that a vote in favor of an increase is a vote against the taxpayers and homeowners in Clayton County. So, the moral of this story is, right, that if you vote to increase, that looks like there may be a vote against people running in the next election because now we see where your loyalty lies. Your loyalty should lie in the people and not in your pockets and definitely not in our pockets. So, take that in consideration because we will be going to the polls.
Kevin Monroe. Kevin Monroe. Yvonne Lawrence. Yvonne Lawrence. All right, that's the last name for the public comments of, no. That's the last name and we are going to close out this public hearing and then go on to the regular business meeting. But, Mr. Reed, we do have to take a vote to close out the public hearing or not? All right, so I'll take a motion to end pub, uh, the public hearing.
So moved. May I state one thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I love you all. You know, you all have come to us, which is what we need and want, with very valid, valid, uh, points that we have to listen to. And I respect you all for that and I am so, so proud of how you all have come to us tonight. I look at this crowd, this is bigger than I've seen in a while. And I wanna see you all out like this and please, please, yeah, let's get out the vote in November.
And I appreciate those words and just to touch on, I'm glad you actually spoke up because I wanted to make a few comments myself, uh, because there were some comments made about us going after other revenue. And we are, I just wanna let you know that these, this board is vigorously fighting the city of Atlanta and the FAA to get our just due from the airport. There's a lot of state and federal regulations that we are fighting uphill battle against, but nonetheless, we are taking up that fight because it's worth fighting. If we got every, every penny that was due us because our airport is in Clayton County, we probably wouldn't have a military. But that is something that has been going on for years, but this board has been cognizant of that and have been fighting that fight. We have state and federal lobbyists that have been working with us along with our U.S. Senators who have made some traction. But right now, we are currently in, uh, talks with not only the city of Atlanta, not only the FAA, but Delta as well. So, I want you to know that those efforts are undergoing. When you spoke about the, the raise for elected officials, first of all, not these elected officials, no, nobody up here got a pay raise, but there is state legislation, unfunded mandate, which means they said, give this certain elected official or elected officials a raise and you pay for it. Now, that passed, so we had to make good on that. Uh, when it comes to the state and federal, uh, grants, we go after that. We take every opportunity that we can find money to not have to ask the state taxpayers of Clayton County to have to pay it. Earlier today, we talked about the number of lawsuits that come through this county. We do have insurance for that, but only at, at a certain point, that money's cut off and then we have to use general fund money to pay the rest of those lawsuits that you see that's been on the news and that's no secret. And lastly, I'll say that what you see in the budget, uh, I respect the last speaker who said, just focus on, uh, police, fire and, police, fire and education, but also citizens of Clayton County deserve a great quality of life. And a lot of what's in that budget also, budget, the most, the biggest part of that budget is personnel. People like you who live in the county and those who don't live in it, but they have families. They have families that have, that depend on them to have a paycheck. Now, we could say, well, we're just a furlough folks, lay people off, but for me, that wasn't an option. So, some of the things that you see to make sure that you have good senior centers, recreation centers, parks and the trail system and so forth, because you deserve, especially our seniors, deserve that quality of life that you are experiencing here in Clayton County. We have a great water park and so forth, great, great library system and we do work with school system, but that comes at a cost sometime. And I say all that to say, to give you some additional information, to let you know that we are not just thinking about the dollars and cents to balance the budget because at the end of the day, the state does require a balanced budget. And we do have a reserve that is best practices of three months to make sure that if anything happens, that this county is able to run for at least three, three or four months. We have to have that. But when you have that shortfall, you have to find a way to make up the difference. And unfortunately, it, it, it comes in the form right now, if we can find something else, then of course this board will consider it, but right now, it looks like that millage increase is the only way we have to balance the budget. But we, but like I said, we will, no, sir. But we hear what you're saying and we appreciate everybody's comments and that's just my, that's just my opinion coming from the chairman. All right, let's, please, please. Is there anybody else got anything to say before I take a motion? All right, is there a motion to close out public comment, I mean, public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick, are any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it is unanimous. All right, at this time, Madam Clerk, we will go into our approval. And we'll let those who wanna leave, the please. Well, we'll, we'll take five minutes while everybody's leaving. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, the board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, any questions on any other items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed, it is unanimous.
Our next item is item number sixteen, ordinance twenty-two-four dash one seventy-seven, presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening, I'm Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair and Board. Um, I have ordinance twenty-two-four one seventy-seven, which is an ordinance to amend the code of Clayton County is amended specifically to amend Part One, related laws pertaining to Clayton County, Chapter Two Administration, Article Two Board of Commissioners, Section two dash thirty-five Agenda, duties of the presiding officer, minutes, quorum, public comment, Section two dash thirty-five dash O five, public comment, to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules and regulations, to provide for severability, uh, to sever our ability to provide an effective date of this ordinance and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye. Opposed. Uh, three, one, it passes. Next.
Next is Resolution twenty-two-four one seventy-eight, a resolution authorizing Clayton County to terminate the professional services agreement with Ohio River South Incorporated to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
No.
Two, two, so it dies well, it's, uh, no vote.
Right, it doesn't pass.
It's no vote. Go ahead, Commissioner Hambrick.
I didn't wanna have to say this, but, um, we have not been serviced by this company for the last two years and I think part of what we discussed early about the budget and cutting back and all and not having to charge our citizens, we've been paying fourteen thousand dollars a month for no service.
Well, let me, let me say this because I disagree with that. We've always present our state lobbyists with the legislative agenda, whether it was us or any of the other elected officials, and they have taken that to the Capitol and have spoke, uh, on those requests. I think the last legislative request that we gave them was more of a supportive posture. We wanted support to continue to fight the fight for the airport and some of the other, uh, issues and items that we were fighting. And I've been down there, so I, I, I can tell you firsthand, I've seen them work and so I, I don't think that's the fact that they have not done anything.
Let me say this, they may have been working for others, but if you poll our legislative delegation and find out what has been done and what we've received from what we've been paying, then you will get an answer. And we have not been receiving what we are paying fourteen thousand dollars a month for.
Well, at this time, the, uh, motion fails either way, so it can be taken up again at a later time. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, our next items are board appointments, starting with item number twenty-one.
So, does this mean we continue to pay the fourteen thousand dollars?
That's correct.
First board appointment is to the Housing Authority, James Pham Rose, uh, term on the Housing Authority expired on May seventh, twenty twenty-four, new term is for five years, beginning immediately and expiring on May seventh, twenty twenty-nine. This is a full board appointment. Any recommendations?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I recommend Ms. Brenda Harrison for that, um, open on the Housing Authority Board.
All right, I'll second the motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
All right, three, one, it passes. Next board appointment is Terrorism Authority, Gabrielle Johnson's term on the Terrorism Authority expired April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, new term is for four years, expiring on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Full board appointment, any recommendations? I'm gonna recommend that, uh, Mr. Johnson be reappointed, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hambrick, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Library Board, Brenda Harrison's appointment on the Library Board expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, new appointment is for three years, expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. It's a full board appointment, are there any recommendations?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I recommend Ms. Salima Abdullah.
All right, I'll second that motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Uh, next board appointment is also to the Library Board, Dr. Yvette Dupree, resigned from the Library Board and her term expired on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, new appointment is for three years, expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Full board appointment, are there any recommendations?
Mr. Chair, is this the one that she said she did not?
Yeah, she, she resigned. She resigned.
I thought you said she did not resign.
This was the one I corrected, saying she did not resign.
I'm sorry.
This is the one I corrected during the beginning, saying that she did not resign.
Right, she did not resign.
Okay.
But she is not seeking reappointment.
Okay. So, it's still open.
It's still open, yes. Are there still any recommendations except for Mr. Dupree?
I think.
Oh, I have the, I have the same question.
Okay. All right, hold that for next time. All right, next board appointment is also to the Library, Trina Colowall. Was appointed to the Library Board on May seventh, twenty twenty-four to replace Maupolar Don, the existing term expired June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, new term is for three years, expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. That is a full board appointment, any recommendations?
I recommend that we reappoint Trina Colowall.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Last board appointment is to the Solid Waste Management Authority, Rob Leatherwood, resigned from the Solid Waste Management Authority, the existing term will expire on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Full board appointment, any recommendations?
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this the appointment that the Vice Chair has for, okay.
It said that.
I think the last time, it was a full board appointment, but I think the last time that this district made recommendations.
That's correct.
All right, can you hold that as well, Madam Clerk? And that concludes, uh, the board appointments.
Our next items are zoning hearings, beginning with item number twenty-seven. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time to complete their full presentation within the ten minutes. When time runs out, the speaker will be expected to cease speaking and leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor shall speak first, applicants in cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right to rebuttal. When speaking, please remember to speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address and name of any organization you represent. Please remember abusive, profanatory or derogatory language would not be permitted. Our first item is item number twenty-seven.
Good evening, Chairman and Board Members. The first item, um, is a future land use map amendment, uh, items twenty-seven and twenty-eight are companion items. Uh, so this is forty-four eighty-seven Madonna, uh, in Georgia, uh, Madonna Road, excuse me, in, uh, Clayton County. Uh, the case is, uh, BLC two four, uh, zero, three, nine, six. Uh, the request is from Creative Community Concepts LLC to amend the future land use map category for the property, uh, located at four eighty-seven Madonna Road in Hampton, Georgia, uh, from conservation residential to low-density residential, uh, for single-family detached, um, lot development. This request was heard before you all and was tabled until this meeting along with the associated case, which is the rezoning petition for this item. Stas recommendation from this was for approval. The Zone Advisory Group recommended denial of this request and I believe that the applicant is here, um, to represent and, uh, happy to answer any questions that you have.
Did we already have the, we had a hearing on one?
You did have a hearing, did you have public comments on?
Was it on the floor?
Um, for.
One of them I know we took comments on. There's like four requests, right?
That's correct, they're in the same area.
No public hearing? There wasn't one?
There was not a public hearing on this one? All right, is the applicant present? Is the applicant present? All right. Well, applicant is not here, I don't, I guess we still have to have, yes, you about to say something?
No, but I will state that we didn't receive any notice to table or withdraw for this particular matter, so.
Okay, well, I'm gonna proceed on with it, this is District Three, right?
That's right.
Proceed on with the, uh, public hearing.
Okay.
All right, so at this time, if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak, this is a public hearing, speak in favor of applicant's request, you can come forward. Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition, too?
Larry Phillips, Hampton, Georgia. As I was up here before on one of the other ones, I think the people beforehand pretty much have already said what I can say in a quicker time. But I would ask the zoning board, one thing I've looked at is on your plat, you show lot four coming up that's closest to Flint River and then it goes behind. You've also shown on your plat that all of the lots go through the pond. Is that true? Can I answer, I have to, I'm sorry.
No, you need to, you need to address this board, but, uh.
I'm sorry. And in retrospect, though, if you take the, the houses from my authority are thirty-five foot setback. Most houses are forty-five to fifty-foot deep, so you're going seventy-five foot now. The pond on McDonald Road is only two hundred feet back. You're only giving yourself a hundred and, somebody wanna do the math for me? Y'all can do it. Y'all can do it. To me, this is unrealistic, to put four houses right there. When you could, I wouldn't have a problem with two. I mean, has anybody even perked the property? Probably not. You know, I mean, and you know and I know, sooner or later, McDonough Road is gonna widen. The Flint River Bridge is going away, they're gonna put a new bridge in. And before he, the guy who's not here now, was not worried about traffic at all. But yet, we like to get out here, coming out of Turner Road, to come here. I wasn't driving the other way. I mean... Sorry, I threw you under the bus. But that's, this is what I don't understand, is all these people beforehand have come before, and they have put their case up here. We're wanting to put more and more housing, which will bring more and more income. But what are you actually doing for the county? If you really look at the county and you do the figures, and I was not gonna say this, but I'm gonna say it now. Clayton County has the highest poverty level in the state of Georgia. The highest. The average is twelve point two percent. Clayton County is sixteen point two percent, of the last figures that I got. And we're wanting to put more houses into Clayton County. I don't understand it, I really don't. You go on Terror Road, they've taken up a whole corner, and that's just gonna be houses, I guess. Everywhere they can find land, they want to put a house, or they want to put a business. And guys, I'm sorry. Y'all are letting them do it. You're approving this. The zoning board says, let's do it. And y'all just say, okay. Even though the committee said no, they denied it. So I suggest on McDonough Road, you shut it down.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Mike Maloney, Turner Road, Clayton County. I think this is the second or the third time this gentleman has not shown up. We're fighting this issue with flooding in that neighborhood, as well as other residents in Clayton County. We got a lot of other problems. This is the third time this whole community is here again, opposing this. We spoke with you after this last meeting, and we were told by you personally that this was gonna be tabled. If this guy did not show up again, it would be tabled for a year.
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, yes, sir. I beg your pardon. You didn't just say it to me.
No, I didn't say that, but we're not gonna go back and forth.
Okay, well, what Larry's saying is true, as far as McDonough Road goes. And what this is gonna do for Turner Road is absolutely nothing. It's gonna open the door for another developer or another investment firm to come into that community and build a new community inside of an existing community. So this guy, I don't know what his game is. I don't know what he's trying to run here. But if they widen McDonough Road, like my neighbor Larry said just a moment ago, these houses are gonna be, you know, their front porch is gonna be sent from me to you, away from the traffic. What he's trying to do on Turner Road, he wants to build two more houses on one-acre lots. Everybody on that road, the majority of them are three to five to twenty, even a couple of hundred-acre lots. I mean, he keeps trying to push this through. He's been denied by the, I don't know if it's the zoning or which board it was. But this is the third meeting I've been up here for this, or the fourth, one of the two. But he didn't show up but for one. I don't understand his intentions, other than, you know, he just wants to make a few bucks, and he doesn't care about the problems in Clayton County, McDonough Road, Turner Road. He's in it for the buck, and he's gonna get out. So appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak?
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. I've been down here to these meetings with Mike and Larry for several times, and I've heard their complaints. And their main complaint down there is the flooding. Now, until you get those situations addressed with their flooding, what you're gonna do in building more houses there, having more sidewalk, having more rooftop, is more water, which is gonna create a greater problem for these already existing people there. And on those grounds, they should be denied. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Four minutes. David Hamrick for District Three. The one thing on that map doesn't show, because it's drawn incorrectly. When you look at a topographical map, the way that is designed and that shows, that is a hill with descending on those contours. Actually, that is a pond. If you go in the middle of that pond and go back out to the road, because I've been there a couple times, you will see there's a dip in the road. The dip actually channels water from the roadway down the hill into the pond. Number one, you do not build into a water-retention pond. Number two, if you start building there, what are you gonna do when that water washes off off the road into the people's house? Down in the Panhandle, down in Lovejoy, I've already gotten complaints for people's yards and houses that are flooded, because we did not properly manage the water flow. Water flows downhill, it will find its own level. And when you go to that road and hit that dip, you will see that it's a foot lower than its surrounding. Like I said, the topographical map is not exactly correct, whoever drew it. Those contour lines should have little arrows pointing down to show it's a receding, which is where it flows. And as I just said, when you widen, the money's already been approved for the widening of that road, you can't go in there, and when you start building, then you're gonna expand the roadway. Now what are you gonna do? And there's also a little cemetery down in there that nobody's brought. So unless we're willing to start moving things around, my suggestion is we go with ZAG and vote denial. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else? All right, did the applicant show up, Bonnie Champs? Nope. Okay, so this is in District Three, which I have been overseeing. And let me say this, that I've been down there. I have seen that infrastructure is not in place for this. And Mr., I think it's Mike Mahoney, Maloney? Maloney, I'm sorry, sir. What I said to you and some of the others was that, number one, I wanted that petitioner to go out into the community and speak to y'all and see if there was any other ideas that he could bring to the table to get your support. He failed to do that. Second thing I said is that... Exactly. Second thing I told you was that I wasn't gonna table it. As you said, I said I was gonna deny it. And with that being said, I make a motion at this time to deny it. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next.
Okay. So the next request is the rezoning portion of this. So you just made a motion on the Futurandius Map Amendment. So BLC two-four-zero-two-zero-three-nine-five is the rezoning petition associated with this, to rezon from agriculture to RS-180. Again, Stas' recommendation was for approval, and ZAG's recommendation was for denial.
Is applicant present? This is a public hearing. Is anyone here who wants to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of? Anybody in opposition, too? Anybody opposed?
Chairman.
We have to have a public hearing. We gotta have a public hearing each time.
Chairman, can we take that and the next two items together?
No, because we gotta have a public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So with each item, we have to have a public hearing to hear from the community.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Now, we're taking up a lot of time here, valuable time, for a situation that we already understand, which is the inconvenience and flooding of the people that already live there. We already denied the applicant on the first request, so let's go ahead and get it done, and deny him on the second request, and be done with it.
Chairman, may I ask a question? So if nobody gets up in opposition, and nobody gets up in favor, do we just go vote?
Do we go straight to the vote?
I just wanted to check.
But we have to have a public hearing, and anybody who would like to speak will have the opportunity to do so. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Or, let me say this also, although everybody can have a word, but if you would like to have a speaker and have everybody to show up who's in favor of what he's saying, then that would be a show that you support what at least one person is saying. Just an idea, but if you get...
I'm supposedly the Speaker of the House. Larry Phillips, Hampton, whatever I just put before, say it again. Uh, I would tell you this, though, and many residents in Clayton County do not know this, but we actually have three bald eagles in that area. And to me, you're just gonna destroy their habitat. And I mean, that's all I'm gonna say, is there's three of them. I'll bring you a picture if I can.
All right, these people standing behind you are in support, in support of opposition.
Opposition.
Opposition, all right, duly noted. Anybody else like to speak, or you gonna let that stand? All right, go ahead, ma'am.
Sandra Hittelson, eleven-five-nine-nine, on Turner. I'm the last property on the side of the creek that's had a lot of controversy. We have a lot of wildlife, not only coyotes, which are not really welcomed or hunted. We have eagles, we have hawks, we have sparrows. We have many snapping turtles, we have rabbits. We have blue heron. We have, I think I said rabbits. But my farm has sixteen horses, and we actually have a pack of wild dogs, too, which that's not gonna be for too long, hopefully. But they have not attacked any of the horses. But this is not a residential area. It's just, I'm retired, most of the people on Turner is retired, or they're staying there till their kids are up and gone, and then they're gonna... That's their forever home on both sides of Turner. So we all bought because it was beautiful and it's peaceful. And I think you said you came, you can feel the peace there. And we just don't want to lose it. The other thing is the traffic, even if you widen McDonough, you're gonna have to put a light or a circle, which God knows, don't put a circle. I've lived through European circles and Hilton Head circles, don't put a circle. They're confusing. And more accidents happen there than with a light. But that's just a little side bit. I've owned the property over six years. It's my forever home, I don't want to see it to change. And if you widen Turner, I don't see how you could possibly do it without condemning a lot of property, a cemetery be moved, fire hydrants, a lot of old trees are gonna have to come down. And also, like the gentleman said, the water runoff is not, right now, you just can't outfox where water wants to run when it rains. And as you know, we've had a lot of rain, and spring is very rainy. And we always, we try to redirect it, and it doesn't listen to us. So anyhow, I wish for denial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? All right, applicant still not being here, I'll make a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Now, one of these, we already had public comment on. Y'all still haven't figured out which one that was?
Chair, I believe that the information for the next item, probably remedy...
Is the one?
Where we're going with this, okay?
Go ahead, sir.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read for the next item, which was in the area, but it's on Turner Road. Just to note that the two items that are being read back-to-back are companion cases. So the next item is a Futurandius Map by the same applicant, Creative Community Concepts LLC, to amend the Futurandius Map category on one-one-zero-five-nine Turner Road in Hampton, Georgia, from conservation residential to low-density residential to develop residential, two homes. There is a rezoning petition as well that you will hear next, which is BLC two-four-zero-two-zero-three-nine-seven for rezoning companion to that, to rezoner from agriculture to RS-180. Staff did receive a formal notice from the applicant to formally withdraw the request moving forward with both the rezoning and the Futurandius Map Amendment.
So they sent you something in writing, obviously they're not here to withdraw the request for both of those items?
That's correct.
All right, well, at this time, I will make a motion to accept the withdrawal. Is there a second?
Chairman.
On both items?
Well, I have a question. Can we not withdraw and still deny those?
Well, if they're withdrawing it, that means they're not putting it forward.
There's two different timeframes from a denial and a withdrawal, isn't there? That's correct. What are they? Can you state what they are? A year for denial, and it's six months for withdrawal.
Okay. All right, yes. So let me amend my motion. I will not accept the withdrawal, I'll make a motion. Is this the one we had public comment on? Because if I'm gonna make a motion to deny, we gotta have public comment, public meeting. It is, or is it?
We did have comments regarding this one. It's on the smaller roads, so that's what the comments were.
Got you, got you. Okay, so at this time, I make a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
On the first one, zero-three-nine-eight.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine is correct. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Let's go to the next.
And that was the motion for both, or we're doing the rezoning?
No, I can only do one at a time.
Okay, understood. So the next item is rezoning, BLC two-four-zero-two-zero-three-nine-seven, and that's the rezoning petition from agriculture to RS-180. Stas' recommendation for this was approval, ZAG's recommendation was for denial. And again, the applicant did formally submit a withdrawal request.
Okay, I'm not gonna honor the withdrawal. At this time, it's a public comment, a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor? Anybody in opposition, too? Hold on a second, hold on a second, y'all. Mr. Reed? Oh, both? No, it was only one that we had a hearing.
Yeah, you only did one. Yeah, you only did one.
And that was the last one?
Yeah, you only did one. Larry Phillips, Hampton, just the same thing.
Speaking of Mike, sir.
Larry Phillips, Hampton, put the same stuff down again, ma'am. Thank you so much. I'm going into politics. I'm telling you right now, this is fun.
On that end?
No, no, no. I mean, I've lived in this county since nineteen eighty, basically. We moved away a couple of times, but basically, we lived here thirty-seven years. I love Clayton County. I really, really do. I hate to see some of the ways it's going, because if it don't catch on, and I'm not talking about Turner Road right now, I'm sorry. If it don't catch up, it's gonna be like Atlanta to Cab County. It's gonna be just like them. And you see the issues they have all the time. But Turner Road is a mute point, it's been sold, it's been bought. I know who bought it. So it's a mute point to do this, but I know you have to go through the hoops to jump, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else?
If it's been sold, I'm good with it.
Okay, anybody else?
Micky Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. You know, the only reason I'm here is because it's gonna be a situation where my community, my Clayton County, and if I don't stand up for other members in my county, how can I expect them to stand up for me in my time of need? And with that being said, and the duress that these people are under with the flooding in the area, it is inconceivable that this board would even allow this detriment of more building in already a flood plain go on. That's all I got to say.
Anybody else?
Throughout this country, the farms are beginning to...
State your name again, state your name again for me.
Oh, Sandra Hittelson, eleven five nine nine Turner Road. Uh, I have a horse farm, which is hopefully gonna be a breeding farm, but I wanted to bring to everybody's attention that all up and down Turner, we have livestock, uh, with the Chick-fil-A farm, we have goats, we have sheep, we have chickens, we have horses, and proudly, we have two bulls, not us, but one of my neighbors across the street, and one up, up the street. So, um, this is just, I don't know if it was Will Rogers, but said, you know, they're not making any more dirt, they're not making any more agricultural farm areas.
Anybody else like to speak? All right, is the applicant here? Saying he's not, I'll make a motion to deny, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Moving forward to the next item, um, this is item thirty-one, uh, BLC two four zero five zero four one seven, advertised as a text amendment, but this resolution, excuse me, this resolution is regarding the, um, planned unit development ordinance requirements within the Clayton County zoning ordinance. Um, staff, um, this is a county-initiated item, staff motion to be, uh, recommended to withdraw this request to the zoning advisory board at the last hearing, and is continuing with that motion to this board, uh, given that we have another opportunity to address that at another time. Right now, it was just advised that we just remove this item for further consideration.
Okay, I'll place that in form of a motion to, uh, you said, to withdraw, to accept the withdrawal, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is item number thirty-two. Uh, this item is the Clayton County twenty thirty-four comprehensive plan. Item thirty-two is also related to resolution twenty twenty-four one eighty-two. Uh, this is regards to county-initiated, uh, item for the, um, consideration for the Clayton County's comprehensive plan. Uh, we do have a presentation, and the, um, representatives here as well. Mr. Gibbs is here to give a presentation on the updates of the comprehensive plan, so I hand it over to him.
Good evening, uh, Board of Commissioners, Randy Gibbs here with the Sizmore Group, and just wanted to brief you on the comp plan. You've seen this, uh, presentation before, um, at the zoning advisory group meeting, uh, and so, I just want to go through it briefly, um, as we're seeking your approval and submit a letter, so that we could send it on to ARC, DCA, get it approved, and allow you to have your qualified local government status. So again, with the Sizmore Group, uh, oh, okay, this is our team, uh, I'm with Sizmore, we've also been working with Sycamore and Kimley Horn with respect to this plan. Little project, well, I skipped the agenda, this is eager. All right, so project schedule, we've been working on this since August of last year, and so, we've been working on this since, uh, since August of last year, uh, going through various, uh, community meetings, um, existing studies, existing conditions assessments, uh, we've conducted a couple of site tours, community, uh, pop-up events, things of that nature, developed, uh, the comp plan. So, uh, what, what is the comp plan? It, as its name insists, insists, excuse me, is that it's a document that, uh, compiles all of the other plans, uh, within, uh, Clayton County, um, so that you have one comprehensive document, uh, uh, one bible, if you will, for everybody within the county to sing to. Um, it also, uh, helps plan for areas of growth, um, as been discussed here tonight. Uh, these are the various elements of the plan, um, and these are elements that are required by, uh, Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Uh, although, um, every five years, the comp plan needs to be updated, uh, the public has an opportunity to comment on the plan at various stages, this just happens to be, uh, the portion of the plan that, that's nearing adoption, um, but at the same time, throughout, uh, there's opportunities for community engage, especially, um, during, uh, the budget, as well as some of the capital improvement, um, capital improvement, uh, processes that the, that the board and the county implement. Here is a list of the various plans that we've, uh, evaluated, uh, so we've looked at the Aratropolis plans, we looked at, uh, some of the municipal plans, as well as, uh, the freight plan, and some of the other, uh, plans that are associated with Clayton County. Uh, here's a summary of, uh, our public engagement. Uh, we have partnered with Sycamore Consulting, uh, to conduct six public, uh, meetings, uh, a community survey, various pop-up events, too, as well as social media engagement, and we've had, uh, a website, Future Focus Clayton, that has allowed, uh, some online engagement, and so with that, we have heard from community, um, community definitely wants some destinations, some hotspots, uh, if you will, so that they don't have to leave their communities or, or venture outside of the county. Uh, we've heard about developmental concerns, uh, some of the mobility issues, especially as it pertains to sidewalks and pedestrian safety, parks and green space, safety concerns, and other ideas have been provided to us by the community robustly, uh, throughout this planning process, and then the way forward. Uh, this is the draft, uh, vision statement that has been, uh, presented before community, based off of community input, as well as stakeholder engagement, uh, conversations with yourself, interviews with yourself, rather, and so, here's the draft vision statement, and then here are some of the major changes and updates, uh, as it pertains to, um, this particular comp plan revisal. Um, and so, we try to make it a little bit easier, uh, to be read as a document, uh, so that, you know, anyone within the community can read it and understand, uh, where the county is going. Uh, we've identified some new goals as it pertains to health, this, health, sustainability, and wellness, as well as broadband. Uh, broadband access was something that was, uh, vocalized, uh, amongst not only, uh, community, um, but also, uh, some of your staff members, uh, within, um, Clayton County. It should be noted that, um, we coordinated with, uh, the group that's working on the Terra Boulevard, LCI, as well as, uh, Aratropolis, um, as they were building out their plans, because both of those plans, obviously, uh, run through or, or take up a big part of, uh, Clayton County, so we, uh, consolidated, cooper, cooperated with them in, in our efforts. And then, we, uh, the CWP, the Community Work Program, uh, updates, uh, we've separated, uh, Development Authority from the Economic Development Department, uh, as well as added, uh, some elements there, too. So, all in all, uh, we have made some major updates, uh, to this update for the comp plan, and we feel like we have a pretty strong document. This document in and of itself has been presented to the public, uh, in the community information meeting in June, uh, to the zoning advisory group in, earlier in July, and now before you as the Board of Commissioners, uh, tonight. And so, um, with that, we, uh, recommend that, uh, as, has been recommended by the other, uh, bodies that we have presented before, uh, that you sign and adopt a letter so that we could, uh, the transmit a letter, so that we could send it on to ARC and DCA. Standing by for your comments.
Anybody got any questions?
I do. Once it's presented to ARC, uh, is it approved, or it's just put on file?
No, ma'am, so once it's presented to ARC, they'll review it, they have about a month to, to provide their comments, to make sure that it falls within their standards and meets their, their criteria. Same thing with DCA, they'll review the document concurrently, and then provide feedback to us and, and, um, the, the planning department, uh, to ensure, I talked too long?
I didn't know.
My bad, my bad. All right, so they'll, they'll provide us with their feedback, and then with that, um, the county, as well as, uh, uh, the consultants have an opportunity to address the, the recommendations, um, that DCA and ARC make. Some of those will be mandatory, some of those will be suggestive, but we have an opportunity to review that. After we review it, we send it back to ARC and DCA, um, so that we can make, so they could check off that we've done, we've met their criteria, before, uh, the county gets the opportunity to, to adopt it fully. Uh, while it's being reviewed by ARC and DCA, uh, the county also has an opportunity to, to comment on the document, and as long as substantive changes are not made, i.e. changes to the community work program, the future land use map or the character areas, um, then DCA and ARC will not have any issues with, with those changes.
Any other questions?
So is, is this the final, is it finalized, what, September?
It will be finalized in the September Board of Commissioners meeting, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let me understand one thing, just for clarification. So once it's adopted, the future land use map cannot be modified?
It can be modified after that, but we're, we're trying to set it up so that it can, uh, this is where the county wants to be right now. Yes, sir, but it is a living document.
Anybody else? Nope. Uh, do you have a second part of this before we, uh, Mr. Reed, we need to take this to a public hearing, right?
So, uh, Chairman and Commissioners, uh, this request, I didn't mention the recommendations from staff, first of all, so, those are for approval, and this will just be for recognition and approval letter for this request to move forward, and then it'll come back for, as a live, final document for you all to consider.
So we don't need a public hearing, just approval from the board?
Just approval for this document to move forward, no public hearing.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Outstanding, thank you.
Okay. Moving forward, um, the next petition that we have is a, um, a re, conditional use request. Um, this is BLC two four zero five, one second, oh, sorry, um, yes, it's condition use request. All right, BLC two four zero five zero four one three, the request is by Pat One Deep for a conditional use permit for a convenience store without fuel cells at twelve ninety-six Highway one thirty-eight, Unit one oh four, Riverdale, Georgia, three oh two nine six, uh, which is currently zoned general business, and is also located in the Highway one thirty-eight overlay. The property is currently two acres of land, uh, and it's near the intersection of Forest Parkway and Highway forty-two, it is within Commissioner District Two. Uh, this request, um, the property is currently used as a commercial plaza with multiple businesses within it. The applicant previously was using it for a grocery store, and has now changed their business model to be a convenience store. Convenience stores within the general business only district require a conditional use permit, so before an active business license can be issued, it would have to be granted this conditional use before moving forward. With that being mentioned in the information stated, uh, staff did recommend approval of this request with one condition, that all signage on the site, uh, shall be limited, to twenty percent instead of the standard forty percent on the building. Uh, Zach's recommendation was denial, uh, based upon the availability of, uh, full-service grocery store and it being in a food desert. Be happy to answer any questions that you have for staff on this one.
Uh, yes, can you verify that address?
Yes, the address, twelve ninety-six Highway one thirty-eight.
Okay, uh, you said something about Highway forty-two and something?
Uh, I believe that was this location about the proximity to it, so that may be an error, but it is located on Highway one thirty-eight. And, I'm sorry, it's between Shannon Oak Drive and Lake Ridge Parkway, so that's the correction, excuse me.
Oh, okay. So, but you read into record Highway forty-two, so I think that needs to be corrected.
Right, so I can reread it just for the record again, so that's twelve ninety-six Highway one thirty-eight, Unit one oh four, Riverdale, Georgia, was located within the Highway one thirty-eight overlay, and the property is located near the intersection of Highway one thirty-eight and Shannon Oak Drive and Lake Ridge Parkway.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present? Please come forward, sir. Please state your name for me, and if you would like to reserve any minutes for rebuttal, usually two or three minutes, should somebody be in opposition to your request?
I'm just sitting on behalf of my brother, Pauly. Uh, my name is Vivek.
And how many minutes would you like to save for rebuttal, if any?
Just two, three minutes.
Two? Okay, set timer for eight, and please, sir.
Uh, we haven't changed the business model yet, but from the Clayton County office, it's like, you know, they, they recommend, like, uh, we apply for conditional use permit, but it, the business has been same for, like, past decade. That's all I would have to say.
Okay, thank you. So this is public hearing at this time, if anybody's here to speak in favor of petitioners' petition, please come forward, anybody like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to, anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Is there anything you'd like to say before I turn it over to Commission District, uh, the Commissioner of that district? No. Commissioner Hamburg?
Uh, excuse me, yes, I recommend denial for BLC two four zero five zero four one three, for conditional use permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, so this would be, um, rezoning petition, item number thirty-three, and I'll read the case record for the record. BLC two four zero five zero four two two, rezoning petition at fifty-seven Highway one thirty-eight, Riverdale, Georgia. This request, excuse me.
Item number thirty-four?
I'm sorry, yeah, thirty-four. I don't got my glasses today, so you have to excuse me. Okay, so item number thirty-four, BLC two four zero five zero four two two, uh, this is the rezoning petition for fifty-seven Highway one thirty-eight. The request is, uh, county-initiated item by the Board of Commissioners to rezonate such a property located at fifty-seven Highway one thirty-eight in Riverdale, Georgia, that is currently zoned RS one eighty, and the request to, is to rezonate to, um, MX, which is mixed-use for the property, um, that is, consists of zero point one six acres of land, and it's also located within the Highway one thirty-eight overlay. And short, this request is to, um, mirror or mesh the subject property with the surrounding properties that are currently zoned mixed-use. Uh, majority of the properties that were rezoned during two thousand and seventeen's map amendment, uh, that did touch Highway one thirty-eight, were intended to include the designation of MX, so this would allow, uh, this one residential piece to mirror or mesh with their surrounding property. Uh, staff's recommendation for this request is for approval, and the zoning advisory board also recommended approval of this request as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Is the petitioner, or is this ours?
County's ours.
This is ours, okay. Uh, any questions? All right, this is public hearing, anybody like to speak in favor of the BLC, the Board of Commissioners' request here, uh, to be consistent with the zoning for this property, please come forward. Anybody in opposition, too? Anybody in opposition to? Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I move that we approve BLC 2405-0422.
Second, the motion, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Okay, moving forward to items 35 and items 36, these are companion cases. The property is located at 2631 Rex Road in Elwood, Georgia. The request is from LGA Engineering Incorporated to amend the future land use map amendment category to subject property from general commercial to medium density residential for a single-family attached townhomes. The property consists of combined 6.2 acres of land and the property is located near the Rex, between Rex Road and Nell Lane and Mount Zion Boulevard. Just a little bit of history on this one, you all are going to be acting on the future land use map amendment first and then the rezoning. A brief summary of their request and the history, this piece was a part of a bigger tract that was rezoned and approved by this board for conditional use for a gasoline service station and convenience store. Since then, parts of the remaining tract has now come before you now for a residential development. And in order for them to achieve their residential zoning district, the future land use map has to be approved. So the conditional use for the tract, original tract includes, as been shown on the screen, the parts that shaded in red that is reserved for the gasoline service station that's currently going, undergoing construction. The portion or the parcel in the back of that red parcel is the subject property that's going before you as petition for a townhome development that would include fee simple townhomes attached. Just providing a scaling of the property of what the applicant provided in their site plan, they also presented some, include amenity areas that be located towards the front of the property next to the gasoline service station and the roads aligning to this property will include private roads. So I want to take a step back and look at the future land use map amendment, because that's what you all are voting on now. So again, the bigger piece of this island here has been reserved for commercial and adjacent to this existing or existing homes that are residential RS 110 and 80. With that information being stated, staff's recommendation for the future land use map amendment was to deny, was denial. ZAG's recommendation was denial as well and the reason being is that staff believes that the original footprint of commercial were better suited for a commercial grocery store or something that can serve the existing residential homeowners in the area. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this petition.
Alright, is the applicant here present? Ms. Azar.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission.
I thought. State your name for us and make sure that if you would like to save any minutes for a rebuttal, should somebody be against it?
Okay, couple of minutes.
Alright, give you two minutes, set timer at eight, please sir.
I had an opportunity to talk to Commissioner Reeves earlier today and I thought our plan was to defer this so she would have an opportunity to acclimate herself to the area and what's going on. I can say this, the 6,000 square foot retail center is under construction, pretty close to being complete. This, in my mind, was a natural transition from the commercial that's owned back there now to the residential section. Townhouses would blend in a lot better than a commercial retail development back there. But anyhow, I agree with Commissioner Reeves that if you grant a deferral, as long as she needs it.
So you're good with the table and Commissioner Reeves, how would you like to move?
I would like to say we'll listen until the August meeting, the August zoning meeting.
I think these are companion cases, so she can take both of them. Or do we need to do them separate?
Have you, I mean, this is kind of start at the public hearing portion since he's speaking here, but I guess, yeah, that's fine if he wants to ask that we're, so this will not be considered a public hearing.
That's correct. We're just going to table it at his request.
Right.
And Commissioner Reeves' confirmation of that request.
35 and 36.
35 and 36, table it until?
Commissioner Reeves, that'll be the August 20th meeting?
August what?
20th, August 20th meeting.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yes.
Alright, the motion is to table these two items until August 20th, which you are agree, are in agreeance with. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Azar.
Thank you.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit to speak before the board with a total time of 20 minutes for public comments. Please remember comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone and speakers should be courteous, respectful and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Aretha Enslay.
Aretha Enslay, unincorporated, Clayton County. Pages one and two dated June 30th, 2024 shows $2,142.77 state of Georgia lien filed against Elena Reeves, December 18th, 2018. Page three, state release July 3rd, 2024. Pages four and five, Elena Reeves qualified March 27th, 2024 with the notice of candidacy and affidavit with $1,068 qualifying fees. Portions of the affidavit states, "I am not a defaulter for any federal, state, county, municipal or school system taxes required of such office holder or candidate if such person has been finally adjudicated by court of competent jurisdiction to owe those taxes. I understand that in any false statement knowingly made by me, this declaration of candidacy and affidavit will subject me to criminal penalties as provided by law. My question, why did Ms. Reeves knowingly make a false statement not only March 27th, but also 2021, special elections and May 2022 elections? Who is responsible for verifying and confirming affidavits since it appears the Democratic Party and County Elections Department do not? Felicia Franklin, 2020, and now appears Elena Reeves three times. Do you know and understand the meaning of character, integrity, transparency and accountability? In 2023, we submitted multiple written complaints against Felicia Franklin to DA Tasha Mosley. Her verbal response months later is outside of her jurisdiction to prosecute. Her incompetency and loyalty to friends causing more public corruption in this county." Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Jeff and Sharon Bryant? Jeff or Sharon Bryant? Mickey Garber?
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, Members of the Board. I would like to quote Shakespeare and a line in Julius Caesar. And it states that "The evil that men do long endures after them and the good that men do is often turd with their bones." Let me say to you, Members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen, do one good thing in the coming end of the year. Restore public comment to the beginning of the agenda and restore our three minutes talking time. For that, for that, any of you leaving this board will long be remembered that you restored voice to the people. Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing that up and we did that tonight.
Well, where the hell was I?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, because you've been sitting here since four o'clock. So yes, that was taken care of tonight, sir. It has been approved.
You, you know, I had the same problem in school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Barbara Gibbs. Barbara Gibbs.
Good evening. Hello to all of you.
State your name.
My name is, thank you Jeff. My name is Barbara Gibbs. I currently reside in Rex, Georgia, Clayton County. How about that? I'm somewhat going to piggyback on what someone had already commented on earlier here today, but I'll read what I have. Since December 18th, 2018, state records show that $2,142.77 state tax liens against Elena Reeves with a release date of July 3rd, 2024, which means she knowingly falsified and declared candidacy and an affidavit in 2021, 2022 and March 2024. This is a felony and a criminal act committed not once, but three times, where both, both parties, well, the Democratic Party and the county elections and registration staff fail to perform their due diligence. Okay, who's responsible for verifying the candidates and the elected officials? Information on affidavits that are, if that's accurate and to make sure that these folks are not in default of any taxes. This is the second commissioner in less than 15 months. We citizens have been made aware of falsified candidacy and affidavit due to unpaid state taxes. And then these liens have been showing for six years and it's along with ongoing investigations by state ethics commissions. Okay, why do certain commissioners think that they're above the law and with a sense of entitlement along with consistently demonstrating a lack of integrity, transparency and accountability? District Attorney Tasha Mosley for over a year has refused to prosecute Felicia Franklin for falsifying 2020 affidavit. Why? Why? We asked District Attorney Tasha Mosley and her office to recuse from criminal complaints against the current and former commissioners. As it stands...
Sorry, Ms. Gibbs, but your time is up.
Okay, Lady Justice is unbalancing Clayton County and public corruption is rampant.
Mike, I can't read the last name. I think the first name is Mike. Mike Melly or Millie? Anybody named Mike? This be your time. Okay, alright. Looks like last name Miller.
First name Ron?
No. Starts, looks like starts with an A maybe. Olin Miller? No Millers, okay. Nakia Barnes, how about that? Ms. Barnes? No Barnes. No Ms. Yancy's here. Carol Yancy.
Carol Yancy, Rex, Georgia. Accountability, transparency, wasteful spending and integrity. The FY25 proposed budget should have included a 10 to 20% salary cut for the commissioners and certain department heads, excluding our first responders, the police and fire, who are a heartbeat for this county. Current ethics board members negligent in their duties, incompetent and a waste of our tax dollars. March 2024, current Chair Marla Thompson Kendall qualified candidates for the county's Democratic Party primary election, which is clearly a conflict of interest. July the 2nd, she initiated several calls to a citizen stating, "I'm about sick of that Carol Yancy. She filed an ethics complaint against me, but the board never acknowledged or provided meeting dates for my six complaints filed between February the 1st through June the 24th. To resolve her sickness with accountability and their toilet tissue practices, please dissolve the ethics board immediately. The shares, toilet tissue accounting, mismanagement and misuse in our tax dollar needs to be addressed as well. The Development Authority Board and their director gave total $9 million in tax credit to produce more toilets and increase the citizens' financial tax burden to pay for their usage of our infrastructure, roads, everything. End result, county government backed up with toilet tissue and mess due to the lack of accountability, transparency and integrity." I'm back.
Marvin Sullivan.
Marvin Sullivan, unincorporated, Jonesboro, 30 years. What I'd like to see from the commissioners during these meetings is a response back from some of the comments that they can comment on and also martyr, more uses out of martyr, more than just in the mornings and in the evenings during express buses, like they have events in Atlanta. Run the buses on Saturdays and Sundays. Let the county members go into those events and come back.
Kind of lost, I'm looking at you like a loss because they do run martyr into the city on Saturday and Sunday.
Well, I'm talking about the express buses.
Oh, you're talking about Greta buses, but I don't think they run anywhere. Yeah, and that's a state, that's state operated and ran.
Okay, well, that's my comment.
But, but to your point, it doesn't hurt us to make that recommendation. So duly notice, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I come from Philadelphia, so for me to drive into Atlanta in a car is terrible sometimes. So if you can cap on a bus and goes like to Lenox on certain times on the weekends, Saturday, Sunday, go there and come back and you know the scheduled time, it's great.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Edenfield. Fred Edenfield. He's not here. Edenfield, Edinfeld. David Hamrick.
David Hamrick for Clayton County, District 3. Seems like we've been here all day, hasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So far, folks, a lot of stuff that we've heard today, a lot of problems, but Clayton County still remains a diamond in the rough. We've got a lot of things that we need to focus on. We need to start dealing with principles, not personalities. My hope is that House Bill 1444, our new ethics group, will help us guide the way. We need to get rid of some of the shady characters, shady dealings. We need to, when we talk about ethics, we need to have people who stand up for them and that's what true transparency is. I know running as a candidate, I have turned in all my paperwork. I have no problem even when I gave tax seminars with Terry Baskin and Dr. Eddie Gordon. I brought my own personal tax assessment page issued by the county, which showed that I and my wife are the legal lawful property owners. I have no problem doing that. Matter of fact, it's better to, as my father used to say, be the example of what can versus don't let this happen to you. Y'all have a great evening. It's been a long day. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Is there a need, Mr. Reed, for executive session?
Yes, on litigation only.
Alright, so motioning go into executive session for litigation.
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any, no, okay, those in favor, I. I started saying the question, but.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. Everyone have a great evening. Motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Mr. Reed, please take both items together.
All right, first is a property damage claim arising from an incident that occurred on February 22, 2021, relating to EXL Services Holding, Trumbull Financial Services, related to property damage to 2016 Ford F-250, the amount of $22,251.72. The next is a settlement agreement between Candace Gardner Miller, on one hand, Olivia Samples, the other commissioners, and the amount, uh, that, sorry, that arose out of a traffic incident that occurred on March 13, 2023, and that is in the amount of $87,500, and also authorized the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue source and expenses required.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any questions on either item? Hearing none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Have a great night. Is there a motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed? It sounds like nobody want to go home tonight.
All right, good night.
Good night.